Welcome to our workshops today. And I'm not sure if it's going to begin. You just set this up, or you just go with Susan?
Well, I'm actually going to defer to Jeffrey today. He is our strategic analysis gentleman. And he is going to present our request to you. And then the rest of us will chime in as necessary.
Okay, well, then Jeffrey, you're up.
Thanks, Commissioner Phillips. Do you, Jamie, do you want me to share my screen? Or do they have the document that we had shared with you?
Both, but they might not have it in front of them. So it's probably.
Okay.
Share it.
Are you seeing the screen now with the document?
It just says coming up.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this with all three of you today. I think obviously, in general, as you know, the work of Forward Together Lebanon, we have continued collaboratively to move through what we have described as four phases. You know, with your help, we've responded. Obviously, with your help, we've begun the recovery phase. Obviously, with your leadership and Karen and everyone's work with the CARES grants. And we now are, what we believe, moving in many ways into what we would consider to be the reimagined phase, where we, you know, work collaboratively from a public and a private sector with our nonprofits, with our tourism partners, et cetera, to really think about, we've got a lot of wonderful assets in Lebanon County. And frankly, we have a lot of exciting opportunities in Lebanon County. And we believe that there's a couple of steps that we're hoping to get your support that would assist in moving to that step. That is also vital when we also talk about rebuilding, which I know the three of you are extremely committed to that, and this entire group Forward Together Lebanon is as well. So under Susan's leadership, the Strategic Planning and Analysis Group, which consists, obviously, of myself, we've had Sam Premack as well from Career Link, and we've had two faculty members, one an economics professor from Lebanon Valley College, and the second in economics and analytics professor from Harrisburg University. We have spent a lot of time looking, combing through data that comes from publicly available sources, obviously, South Central Workforce Investment Board, you know, Moody's, a host of others. And the reality of it is, is that Lebanon County, you know, historically, you know, based on that data, is doing better than other counties and better than the state average. However, there's still a lot of opportunities. And as we have combed through that data, read a lot of insights and analysis, the recommendation that we took to the Forward Together Lebanon Group under Susan's leadership and Karen's leadership and Brooke's leadership, et cetera, was that it really would behoove us to consider a partnership with an economic development organization like a, you know, Fourth Economy or an ECON consult that would specifically look at how do we, as a county, consider, you know, not only the data, but more importantly, what do we see from a pre-COVID, during COVID, and post-COVID from an economic recovery? What are the challenges? Yes, you know, as our commissioners, you hear from the small businesses, you hear from our residents. But when we go more broadly and consider the whole county, what truly are the challenges? What truly do we need to recover from? What truly do we want to reimagine from? And then what do we want to do for a rebuild phase? And we believe in speaking with these two organizations, that one of them, or both of them, frankly, one that we would choose, really has the experience, the expertise. They're working actually with, you know, both of them are working with other counties in a similar fashion. Fourth Economy has done a similar fashion with York. And ECON consult is doing a similar fashion, actually, in Philadelphia County, as well as Bucks County and some others. And, you know, really, what we consider this to be is an opportunity to engage in an economic recovery planning and strategy process that would be very inclusive, frankly, extremely inclusive. It would be very focused on our businesses, all sizes, very focused on tourism, very focused on all aspects of tourism, so the Expo Center, et cetera, but also very focused as well on our nonprofit community under Brooke's leadership, of really making sure that, kind of building on the good work of the CARES grants and the leadership that each of you have put in, to ensure that we don't stop with those grants, that we continue to find ways to partner and continue to move the county forward. And so essentially, what this would start with is, as Susan has asked, is that both of them would be able to complete a data analysis specifically to Lebanon County, all aspects of Lebanon County, every municipality, every school district, all of the, you know, key elements that you as the commissioners would want to see. They would complete that by December. We would have for us by December, at least the data components, the analysis from an economic standpoint. We would also begin to, in again, in an inclusive manner, be working towards the next element of the process, which would be the designing the strategies to improve our economic position. So we would partner, again, with all the different sectors that we've talked about, so that we would move forward early 2021 with those components, to make sure that the state wouldn't have any questions. And we would obviously outline this so that you were comfortable, so that you would have, you know, be able to answer any questions that the Commonwealth may have. It would be highly qualitative research as well as quantitative assessments. And I think that's really, really important, because obviously, a lot of times, we're seeing a lot of quantitative. We're not necessarily seeing the qualitative in some of the assessments that we see today. And so this would have both. We believe that that would help from an economic outlook perspective. It would also help from a planning perspective, all of the different audiences that we're talking about. I think I noted the inclusive part of this, and I want to highlight that. We would propose that this be a partnership with the commissioners. We would propose that however you would deem that, whether Jamie would be working with the group, or a commissioner, or, you know, two commissioners, however would be most appropriate, that, you know, Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation, obviously, the Chamber, Visit Lebanon Valley, and the United Way be very, very involved from a steering committee end. That group would work to pull in through the existing assets of Forward Together Lebanon, but also your input. Who else needs to be there? Maybe some municipal leaders, maybe some superintendents, maybe, you know, whomever. With, again, that purpose of being inclusive. And I think, you know, to break it down for you, we have received two proposals. We did actually reach out to more than two. We reached out to a total of three. One was one that has done work up in the Luzern-Lakawana County, sort of part of Wilkes University. To be honest, their depth and the magnitude of this work, they just wouldn't have that. However, ECON consult and Fourth Economy would. Their proposals, frankly, are extremely similar in many ways, their approach. You know, I'll ask Karen and Susan to comment and Brooke to comment on that as well, but from my vantage point, they're very similar. There's some cost difference. ECON consult is coming in at $90,000. And then they, you know, they always say, we'll do an on-call economic analysis. And Fourth Economy is coming in just over $120,000, basically all in for both. However, I would say this, too. They both have actually done some similar work together in the past. And so, you know, sometimes there is the beauty to say, you, you know, obviously, we're proposing to use some of the funds that Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation has been deemed within the CARES funds. But if we would want to challenge them to think about how they could do this together to kind of get the best and brightest of both, they've done that before. In fact, they've done that for Team Pennsylvania, and they've done that for the Pennsylvania Economic Development Association. And so where we stand today is to have this discussion with you. Ultimately, our hope is that you would green light the opportunity to move forward. And essentially, what we would propose, open to your discussion, is that we would pull together the group, including to add Jen Cuso to the group, as well as whoever you would determine on behalf of the commissioners, to literally interview both. I've had an opportunity to speak in length with both, but outside of that, you know, Susan knows both, Karen knows both. However, I think we would want to interview them. We would want to make sure that we're most comfortable as quickly as possible with making a final selection on which one that is, so that we're not just deciding on price, but we're deciding on quality and deciding on results. If we ultimately would want to propose them working together, that can happen very quickly. They know each other well. They're not, yes, they compete, but they're also friendly, you know, cooperative elements. And then, you know, moving extremely quickly into the beginning phase of the data. I have talked with both that we have to move extremely quickly, particularly given the conversation that Susan has had with the Commonwealth. They have no concerns with that. In many ways, obviously, Fourth Economy has done work with the city, but ECON consult, they all tend to have a lot of these data sets already, in many ways, at their disposal. And they have teams, you know, fairly large teams, and they're prepared to move forward. So I'll stop there and just ask Karen, Susan, and Brooke to comment, you know, from their expertise.
Yeah, I see this as an exciting opportunity for the county, Forward Together, to move forward together and come up with a plan that's strategically driven, research-driven, and implement that so that we can move forward to reimagine our economy and our future for the county. So, you know, I had some concerns with, would this be an eligible use under our CARES funding? I had conversations with Dave Brinton at the state. He said that, you know, it's kind of thinking a little bit out of the box, but he said, if you focus it on COVID, that it's COVID recovery. And he really stressed that it would be COVID recovery. And we'd have the outcome in a draft form by the end of the year. He thinks that it would be an eligible usage for funding. I'd also ask Jamie to check with him as well, because we want to make sure that we're going down the right path and that we're all on the same path together. But I'm excited, because I think as an economic developer, you know, working together as a team and being able to work with the commissioners on something that's going to evaluate everything, give us data that we need, and then coming up with that strategic plan, it can only, I think it can only enhance our recovery effort.
Can you give an example of one of the, I mean, other than something in writing, something within it? Give an example of what we might hear or see.
Jeffrey, I'll let you move forward with that.
Yeah. So I think Commissioner Litz, in terms of that, you know, some of the things that I'll give you an example of, ECON consult, for example, one of the things that they did when they did the similar assessment in Philadelphia was, you may have seen among your colleagues and the county commissioners and, you know, et cetera, association in the southeast, an increased focus in cell and gene therapy. That is actually a major area that came out of a similar project that they did in that region, which now the Philadelphia Chamber, the Visit Philadelphia, et cetera, have all collaboratively jumped on. And it's actually become a major strategy. Now, we're not obviously comparing apples to apples with that example. However, there are a lot of similar elements that we have here with Bayer and, you know, and others, advanced manufacturing with Hershey. I think some of the examples that you see with work that occurs among Fourth Economy and ECON consult is the continued building on what Susan referred to of public-private partnerships. I'll give you a great example. I know as a local school board member, when we had the LERA come before us for the Hershey Company, there was a lot of opportunities, I think, collaboratively, that we as a county, you know, with Susan, with Karen, et cetera, even Brooke, that could actually pull together to actually sell Lebanon County in a stronger way. And sometimes these processes actually reveal some of those opportunities in ways that you've never imagined. I went through this when I was in Munro County with the Munro County Commissioners. And what we found after it was our university, our hospital, our county government, our private businesses worked so much, I don't want to say better, but more congruently in a way to sell the county.
Could you repeat the therapy that you said? It kind of broke up.
Cell and gene therapy.
Cell and gene.
Yep, yeah. And that's a, it's in the life sciences industry. I will tell you that Karen and Susan, I've even had offhand conversations about the fact that because of our proximity as a county to the Philadelphia region, and Lebanon Valley College has very strong life science programs, Lebanon County could also be potentially a player in getting some life science companies to this region. Bayer is here, but there could be others. And so sometimes what these processes do is working with a Fourth Economy or an ECON consult, it allows you to reimagine other ways to get industry here, to keep our residents employed in Lebanon County, keep the taxes in Lebanon County, and diversify our economy.
So this is like a pharmaceutical, am I understanding? Because you're comparing it to Bayer?
It's, it can be pharmaceutical, but it also can be, there's actually cell and gene therapy work that occurs at Penn State College of Medicine. It's the idea of looking at genes and precision medicine, personalized medicine, so that we can better deliver healthcare to you as a consumer and reach you where your genes are at.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. Thank you.
If I may add on that a little bit, you know, we'll have a baseline understanding of our county. So, Joellen, it's going to look at local trends, you know, the context of growth and where the local economy leads or lags. It's also going to look at economic competitiveness with five critical ingredients, like sustainability, vibrant, you know, communities, and see how those, you know, helped with the CARES funding or what the need was. And then to be able to implement all that, because I think the CARES funding put a Band-Aid on a lot of companies, but there's going to be a lot of recovery needs moving forward. And if we can identify them and find resources to help with that, it'll be, it'll be good for the county. And then what are the drivers for regional growth, for the county growth? You know, the report would also look at that. So there's going to be a lot of statistical data that we'll gather. And then there's going to be strategies on how we would move forward with those strategies.
And does this data become public data?
Yes.
If I may add on to the already very well-spoken comments by Susan and Jeffrey, as a community leader, and amongst an amazing group of people here, I feel that I've come to a point where I think I know what could be done next, but I'm really not sure. And so I could just be putting a lot of time and energy into programs and providing resources that may or may not hit the mark. And I think the theory behind this, in my eyes, is that we are all ready to dig in and continue to help Lebanon County heal through coronavirus impacts. But we need some guidance based on actual facts and data to understand where to best utilize our efforts and resources. And so none of us really have the time or the background to do full, complete data analysis and determine what those next steps should be. But we can certainly help to implement the suggestions at the end of that process. So I think we're all looking for what is that next step to help get Lebanon County back on its feet, to recover quicker than maybe other areas. I would hate to look back in a year and think, wow, if we had only known that that would help, we could have done it sooner. So the point of this is to provide the right information so that we can react and respond and pool our time and resources as community leaders much faster and in a way that utilizes them to the best of what the community needs. And so it's really hard for us to just shoot in the dark on it. I know that I'm, none of us have really faced a pandemic like this before and the economic impact on our community. Therefore, I think we're all kind of scratching our heads, thinking, well, what is the best thing for us to do? Well, that data analysis done the right way will give us some of that direction.
Jointly, you have convinced me. Thank you for being patient till I caught up with where you were at.
I just had one more piece to it before Brooke speaks into it. I asked Brooke to join Forward Together Lebanon, because I think so often we just look at, you know, certain pieces. And her piece is so critical. I mean, she worked with so many of the social service agencies that those agencies are there that really, I mean, jobs are there, they affect people's lives, but that is a large portion of it. And to keep that portion healthy and growing and to have that into our study as well, I think will speak volumes. So Brooke, you want to add to that?
I did. I was just going to share, you know, I think a plan like this can be really powerful to connect us across sectors. You know, even in the nonprofit side of things, what we want is for our community members to be self-sufficient. You know, we have a lot of philanthropic investments that are supporting adult education, job training, those types of things. And I think it could be very powerful to align our philanthropic efforts with, you know, other sectors and bolster things that are working. You know, I think if we're able to leverage partnerships and show really good connectivity across sectors, it also elevates us to apply for larger grants that could support some work in our community. So I absolutely think something like this could be very beneficial in moving Lebanon County forward. So I appreciate you considering.
Any other comments, Jamie? Unmute, please, everything.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Shouldn't take more than a half hour. First of all, I just wanted to, just so we're clear, and maybe I misheard, or maybe this isn't the impression, but when Jeffrey was talking about the cell and gene studies and Bayer and so on, this isn't just about pharmaceuticals. I don't know if Commissioner Litz, somewhere along the way, when you asked about Bayer, I just want to make sure it's not just about pharmaceutical industry here.
Not the whole study, but I meant, I was curious about the cell and gene. I just wondered what they meant by it.
Okay.
Thank you.
One is a request, whether it's Jeffrey or Susan, could you please document that third entity that you pursued for a quote? Even if they chose not to quote, just that we, you know, have some evidence or some record that we made an attempt on a third, it always helps in case somebody comes back and inquires how much effort to, you know, to, or how much competitiveness was included. What, well, how much effort is going to be needed on the part of the local participants? I heard Karen say that, you know, they're going to have, they already have data sets available to them, I think, either of these companies. But is there going, is there a lot of involvement where they come to town and say, all right, we need sit-down meetings here, here, and here, we're going to have to gather all of this data? You know, how much effort is necessary on the local part?
So in terms of the data part of that, Jamie, very little. I will say this, Susan, Karen, and Brooke and I have talked about, we would want to, there are some things that we will also send them, like, for example, Brooke has some updated Alice reporting. We want to be, again, really inclusive. So there's a lot of existing things that we would send them as well. And we would also ask if there would be things that you would want to ensure that we would do that, too. In terms of, kind of like the next step of like implementing, that's really up to us as a group as to, you know, how much involvement, you know, is needed from that perspective. I think, you know, from our perspective, we would work this through the Forward Together Lebanon Group, adding some of the additional stakeholders to it. But in terms of like meetings and such, we would work together to come up with what would be the right cadence, so that we're still sensitive and thoughtful to everyone's time. But based on the discussions, I wouldn't anticipate that it's going to be like, you know, too difficult to manage. To Karen's point, it would be really an integral element that right now we just don't have.
Okay. I asked, mainly I asked, because a lot of the same faces that are sitting here making the presentation and will be, you know, assisting with the study are also involved with the CARES grants and so many other aspects. And it's just a, kind of going back to the same well.
Jamie, if I may add, that I think the CARES grant application stripped of personal data would also provide a tremendous wealth of information to this kind of study as well. The kinds of businesses that applied, the need that they had, their stories, along with the data that's already part of just general data, available workforce issues, job openings, growth, things like that.
Yeah, they might be able to sort some trends out of that or something. Yeah, that's a good point. The, this is just a housekeeping thing. Would LVEDC be the client then of the, I don't think the county needs to be the client, because you get certain, you know, by the CARES Act, you get a certain allocation. So it doesn't, the county should approve, as I've stated many times, the county should be approving each dollar of CARES. But in terms of being the client, would that be EDC then?
That's to be determined, Jamie. I think it would be great if the county was the client and we would be overseers, but you would need to determine that. However, that works for the funding.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman?
Are you, you have more, Jamie? Go ahead.
Just one more, one more is a quick one. And this goes back to the reference to David Brinton at DCED. It's my understanding that in order to kind of check the box that this was, you know, a CARES-eligible item and that it was done within the timeframe, which sounds like it can be, that sounds plausible or possible, I should say. What deliverable would be implemented first, so that we're, you know, within that March 1 to December 30th window, so that, again, at DCED, I have no idea how much follow-up DCED is going to be doing on this CARES. But, so if they follow up and say, all right, demonstrate for us, you know, where this benefit came in 2020.
And Dave suggested that we have it in draft form. We have all the data in the document, and we have the strategies in the document. And that even if it's a small piece, that we try to implement at least one of the strategies.
So you don't know what that'll be until you see it, I guess.
In other words, we have to pass it so we know what's in it, right?
Right, right. I guess so, yeah.
Some people never forget.
No, you're right.
One of the things that we need to be conscious of is that the county did not actually receive CARES Act money themselves. And so if the county is the recipient of the contract, the county will be paying out of money that the county does not have. However, it's unauthorized for the EDC to have CARES Act money. If it's approved through that, then it is much more understandably paid out by the EDC.
That's an excellent point.
I'm not trying to put it on you, Susan, it's just I think that it's going to catch up if the money doesn't go through the right channel.
Yeah, I wouldn't want them to come back and say, well, we're going to push that into administrative and you weren't eligible administration. Yeah, good point.
And I don't mind doing that. I just don't want to be responsible if they come back next year and do their audit and say, hey, sorry, this wasn't eligible. And then the Economic Development Corporation is on the hook for the funding.
Well, I think, I think that sums up my major concern, because I have no trust with the state administration. And I've seen them continue to try to gain retribution for the sins of Lebanon County. And we're going out on a limb here for $100,000, $100,000 plus. And I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want to see the EDC eligible for that. And I don't want to see the county eligible for that. And, you know, Jeffrey, your opening comments, you may actually express concerns yourself that, you know, we need to do this so that we please the state and they're okay with it and so on. I have some real concerns. I really do.
I would make sure that in the narrative, there is a paragraph that explains who you contacted and what the response was, and that we are moving forward with this in mind of putting COVID at the forefront. And you can wordsmith it, but you understand what I'm saying? That should be part of the narrative.
That's what David recommended, that it's going to take wordsmithing and you really need to, like you just said, Joellen.
I mean, I guess I also go back to then, you know, if the CARES Act funding was out, if there was a, an allocation to EDC for economic recovery of the community, how is that defined? I mean, to me, this is the epitome of that. We are trying to figure out how to best utilize our energies for economic recovery specifically due to COVID. So even if we work in the wording that is in the DCED guidelines, so that it parrots back that wording, it makes sense.
I, the other thing, Commissioner Ames, that I would add is that I did speak with both Fourth Economy and ECON consult about this very issue. And one of the things they both said they would be also happy to do is be a part of that wording, as well as be a part of any subsequent conversations, given their strong network of contacts within DCED, particularly within the governor's office, because they're all doing this for other places. And so they regularly do this. So, you know, my comments, as you alluded to, are not necessarily out of the concern from that vantage point. So, you know, my comments, as you alluded to, are not necessarily out of the concern from that vantage point. I think we have two prominent organizations that have, you know, even in many cases, former DCED folks at the helm, that have very, very strong contacts and network. And I completely, you know, understand where you're coming from as well. The other thing I would say is, you know, to Commissioner Litz's standpoint, with their offer to do that, we would make sure that we wouldn't, you know, do anything that would put anyone at risk until we had certainty from the Commonwealth that this would be an absolute applicable expense.
Okay, and you'll get it in writing?
Absolutely. And we would work with, with, you know, whomever was the chosen one to make sure that we had that.
Jeffrey, is there, did you say that they are doing the same thing with other counties using their CARES Act funding?
I'm not sure about the CARES Act funding portion, because I, I mean, I know, like, Philly got theirs directly because of their size, so it's hard to, you know, compare that. York used it from the, you know, they had foundation funding, so, but we can, we can double-check that.
Because if we can set a precedent somewhere else as well, and the fact that they're willing to advocate on the state level is certainly important, too.
I have a few comments, but Laura LeBeau has her hand raised. So Laura, would you like to give us your question?
Yeah, I was just curious, when Jeffrey was mentioning that EconConsult and Fourth Economy could be engaged to work together, what would that cost and how would you go about making that determination to, in fact, engage both of them together?
So what I would say to that is, you know, Susan and I actually had that email exchange earlier. So what I can tell you, Laura, is that both, both CEOs of both firms know each other extremely well. They have done this work together. We have not, because of, you know, stage-wise where we are in the, in the discussions, we haven't thrown that out yet to both of them. However, they have done this extremely well before, as I mentioned in two other examples. So, you know, again, in this case, you know, what I would say is, is we would, you know, we would look to, you know, almost have a threshold, you know, from the commissioners, don't go above this amount, type of a thing, within the, you know, within what the EDC was, was allocated. And then we would work with them to ensure that it fit the spirit of what we wanted collectively to come out in the, in the report, but then, more importantly, in the implementation, and make sure that it didn't exceed that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments, or Jamie, or anyone else?
Will we vote on this tomorrow?
I, yeah, you're, you're, well, I mean, you can...
Or don't we have to?
Yeah, the only vote I'm thinking of, I mean, unless you want to give a vote tomorrow to proceed, so that that is additionally on the record. Really, the, you know, if the EDC is willing to be the client, then the only vote you'll really have is when it comes to pay the bill. But if you just, if you desire to just add a little more to it, you certainly could do it as an authorization to proceed. I don't think you need to, I think just, I think your real obligation is, is the funding, where the funding is coming from, and that that funding needs to be authorized by you before it's dispersed. So, I guess that's your choice then. But it would need to be tomorrow, because today's a workshop, not an advertised. The only workshop we took action was the, the one for the CARES grant that I had advertised as such.
And I'm not trying to present that I'm double-dipping or trying to cover two things with one, but we do have some other studies that have been requested, and, and some of us have acknowledged are needed. And one is a housing study for Lebanon County that would look at the needs, the deficiencies, trends, and so on, rates of rent, and just the whole picture of where we are in terms of the assets of housing. And so I know it's beyond the scope of this, but if these folks do anything in that area and they're going to be covering, you know, parallel with it, if we could add to that from the county's point of view, if we're going to spend 60 grand on a housing study, maybe for 20, because they're doing a lot of work in our county. I'm just asking, it's a layperson's view of this, but the other one is, so that's housing is one, and the other is the skilled labor gap or shortage that, you know, coming out of this thing, that's, we have a lot of businesses re-investing here and, and expanding here and coming from other areas of the country. And we, we don't have the labor to meet those demands. You know, people come up to me, just because it's a popular thing to say, well, hey, we need more jobs. No, we need more workers, has been the, the real cry. So again, that's another part of, you know, what we need to get a grip on is what do we have in a pool out there for, and what do, what's our way of addressing that, that gap or that, that need for more workers? And skilled workers especially, I think, in, in the technology jobs that are coming our way. So those are just two things, if there's any way of, I know it's beyond the scope of this, but if there is any way, when you're talking to these folks, that any of that would be part of it, or we could get some light shed on it, that would be good. And my only other comment is, I want to thank all of you. I didn't do that at the beginning, but for all your work on the, the first round, that went very smoothly and very professionally and efficiently. And on the eve of the second round, I just want to make sure that you are aware of how much we appreciate all that you've done. So that's, that's all I have. Joel?
Yeah, the other thing that I was wondering, what I've been observing is that there is a real competition for, as Commissioner Phillips pointed out, for workers. So if one is paying 14, the next one is going to offer 16 and a, either $100 or $1,000 sign-on bonus, and it's just like all hell to skelter, will there be any direction to businesses on what is appropriate salary? I mean, is it, is it clearly and only the one with the most money gets the workers? Or is there something else to this that we're missing? And could that help all the businesses? I don't know if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I think, Joel, and like, salary plays a big part in where people decide they'd like to work, but then also what they enjoy doing. So if you take someone in the hospitality and you, and they're getting $10 an hour, and you say, there's a wonderful manufacturing job over here that'll pay you $18 an hour, chances are they're not going to go to that, because it's not a place they want to be, you know? Same with the distribution center. So I think salary helps if you're in, kind of in that same field or a field of interest, but it's not, I don't think it's the, if we could get everybody to pay $20 an hour, I think, or you'd get a hard, a large segment, the people that enjoy hospitality aren't going to go over to the $20 an hour job. So I don't think there's an easy answer.
Even within the same segment, they're just job hopping, you know, he's going to give me more, he's going to give me a bonus, and it's like, there's no stability, and it's really hurting businesses.
Yeah, and that's, that goes back to the individual, you know? You have to start way back with some of these basic skills, and I think educate students early on of, you know, what the value of insurance and, and different benefits that a company gives you, pension, et cetera, so they don't hop for the quarter an hour.
You know, I, I think the other thing, Joel, and that plays into this, Jeffrey mentioned the Alice study, and so that's something United Way is actively involved in, and it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And so what that means is it captures the individuals above the 100% of the poverty line, people who are working, but they still can't make ends meet. And so, you know, I'm happy to share the study with you, we just have refreshed data sets for Lebanon County, which I can share, and if you add up the poverty rate plus the, the people that fall into this Alice category, we're at about 38% for Lebanon County. And so I think, you know, people are looking for, how can I make more money? Because they're working and still can't meet that survival budget, you know, they, they can't make it work. So I, I would absolutely love to share that with you, if you, if you're interested in seeing that.
Yes, and I, I got most of Alice, I get asset limited, constrained, constrained employees. What was the I?
Income constrained, employed.
Thank you.
If I may add, a couple of quick comments to, to your point, Commissioner Litz. There's a lot of things that factor into whether somebody jumps the job or not. Some of it is transportation to that location, some of it is the, the shift that they're able to work.
You froze, Karen. That's a great look for you. She says I always take her picture when she isn't looking the best. I didn't do this, I promise.
Yeah, so she was just explaining the different barriers that people have for employment. And so we're starting to break those down even further, to look at the barriers and say, how can we address some of these barriers so that they go away? And this employment issue is, we've been talking, spinning our wheels for a long time, and we're just hoping, I just partnered with Lancaster EDC and some others in the region, and we're thinking if we put the research behind the data, the research, and combine that, that maybe it'll show something that we haven't been able to get our fingers on for the last 10 years, and that we'd be able to start a new approach and, and find a solution.
Okay. Anything else? Has Karen thought out yet, or no?
She's gone.
Oh, she's gone, okay.
I restarted our computer. So I would feel, before you take the vote, I would feel more comfortable if you could put something that, you know, where, you know, that if DCED comes back and says it's not eligible, that the county is responsible and not the Economic Development Corporation. For the fee.
Okay.
I think Karen is, is trying to get back in the way it looks.
Yeah. Can you bring her back in, Dawn?
She should be coming. Wonder where she's at, though.
Well, I think, if I could, if I could further address that, I think, I think that no matter how you would word it, approve it, whatever, the county ultimately is responsible. The CARES funding has been granted to the county. If there's a, if there's a major concern about that, then I guess that, that concern could be fatal to this, I guess. But, but, you know, it's not really a who's responsible, I think that's clearly the county. I think what's on EDC is to make sure that it's...
Eligible.
That it's eligible, right, that it's, that that's not a concern, so.
I think Jeffrey promised to get that in writing.
There I was, waxy eloquently, such amazing words in my internet crap.
What, what's that again?
I said, there I was, like, such so eloquent, and the internet cracked out, so.
Yeah.
But I think you got the point, as I can tell by the conversation, that we, you know, that we may want to piggyback onto this study with other contracts, but they should be very clearly written differently. So if you wanted to utilize the data that was already being collected and then add into it separately to the county on other studies, but the two of them should not overlap in any way, because that's what we bring in those questions as to, are we misusing the CARES Act money?
Yes, right, okay, right. Anything else?
Do you, do you have a desire to do some sort of an action to, to move it on tomorrow? Or are you okay with proceeding and addressing that when it comes, when the bill comes to, so to speak? And if I could, just one more, are they, do, does anyone know, does, is the firm looking, do they have a sort of a signing? You know, is any of it upfront, or do they bill it all at the completion? That's probably important.
According to their contract, some of them will bill 40% and 20% and move forward as they complete it.
Okay, so you actually would need to be authorizing an expenditure at the outset, it sounds like, sorry.
And we do have to make a motion tomorrow?
Sorry, Commissioner Ames, I just wanted, I had a feeling that might have been the case.
No, I, I had a thought, but I think your discussion now, just, I, I, I still have some concern about taking action, releasing funds, until I see an assurance from DCED that they would look favorably upon this, so that none of us get stuck with egg on our face.
Well, that's, that's a tough one. We're entrusting a lot of this to the folks that are reviewing all the 200-plus grants that we gave out, you know, in the last two weeks, and that, all that is, once that's audited, how, you know, and Bill, I go to the trust issue, because it's a concern that if someone wants to, in audit, you know, create a problem for you, you know, it's, it's not difficult to do, and then it's going to be a back-and-forth fight to, you know, make our case, I think, is what, what it ends up being in January, February, March, what, once the audit takes place. And if they ding us on something, I think we're just going to have to fight to, you know, make it clear, you know, that what our intentions and how we, we saw it. And that, I think, would apply to this as well. So it's, these are tough ones, because the county is on the hook, and it's 10 million bucks total if they really want to be, you know, obnoxious.
Jeffrey, are any of the conversation you've had with the state in writing at this point, like emails?
I haven't actually had conversations with, Susan has had conversations with DCED. My conversations were just with, with Fourth Economy and EconConsult about, would they be willing to help us with making sure that whatever language, to Karen's earlier point? And then, you know, when we would choose one of them, for example, would they also be willing to speak to their colleagues to make sure that whatever they do fits what DCED would expect? And that answer was yes, but Susan has, I think, Susan, you've had in writing, right?
No, just by phone, they're, they're smarter up there than putting it in writing, so.
You have to ask, you have to be bold enough to ask.
Yeah, yeah, I did with him, so maybe you...
You can, you can also word an email from you, this is my understanding, if I'm wrong, please respond in kind. And otherwise, we're going to be moving forward and with the understanding that this is acceptable. So there's different ways you can get an answer.
Yeah, usually when I put it in writing, he responds by a telephone call. That's what makes it challenging.
Stay positive.
All right. A lot of gray in this one, but we can get that moved to the black, I think, and get it, you know, clearer, and I, I'm prepared to discuss it tomorrow and to vote, to take it, to get a motion to talk about it further tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Does that conclude our business, Jamie, for this segment?
I think so, yeah. So plan to bring, bring Susan in tomorrow requesting a motion, or are you prepared to do that? I think we have the time, we can do that probably 10:30 or 10:45, somewhere on the agenda.
All right.
Okay. We'll just have you make a presentation and go with it that way. You know, just a presentation for the purposes of a motion, not, not this, again.
Okay.
Not necessary.
And Suzie, you have some audio issues, I think, maybe if you're coming in tomorrow.
It, we're switching over from Verizon to Comcast, because it's, it's ongoing.
Okay, you're aware, okay, very good. Anything else? Not?
9:30 tomorrow.
So we don't have the insurance people today?
That's tomorrow morning.
That's tomorrow, I think, after...
Oh, tomorrow. I'm sorry, I got my things mixed up. Dawn, if you sent something different after I left, could you send it again? I deleted it thinking that it was what you gave me, and then after I read your email prior to that, I'm thinking, whoops, maybe my finger was too quick on the draw there.
Yep, no problem.
So Jamie, you said 10:30 tomorrow?
Let me.
Confirm it.
Yeah, Dawn, speed managing, Dawn, what do you? She has the agenda carved out. Where would it be?
Mike Anderson's a little after 10, like 10:15, so probably 10:30.
Okay.
Because he's got about six things on his list.
Okay. Hopefully 10:30, just, you can come in through the, through the.
I'll send Susan the link.
Okay, there you go. You'll get the link from Dawn. Thank you.
All right, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you, good day.
Thank you, everyone.